Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Council meeting for the City of Edina. It is Tuesday, February 7th, 2023. It is 7:00 PM. Just a reminder to folks, kind of to follow on with Director Bennerott, we have been conducting these meetings in a hybrid format. That means that people can listen in remotely and participate in the meeting at both community comment and at the public hearing level when we do have a public hearing, and we do have one this evening. And so the way that people are watching the meeting is either on cable TV or edinamn.gov live meetings, or maybe on Facebook. And I'm going to have them put the number up on the screen there to get ready here, because community comment will come up fairly quickly. So if you haven't got that number written down, and you want to call in and talk to the council about something that's of concern to you, that's not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing, then this is the way you call in. And that'll be the same number we use when we get to the public hearing matter. So having provided that information, I'm going to turn to Noel Ford and ask her to call the meeting to order.
Councilmember Agnew, present. Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Rissler.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here. Next matter is the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, folks. We've got a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone on the council or from a staff standpoint that wishes to modify the agenda at all? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Jackson,委员长，Councilmember Jackson moves that we approve the meeting agenda. Councilmember Pierce, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the meeting agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now we are indeed right on community comment. So if you want to speak to the council about something that's of concern to you, you should get on the line. Remember, you've had a couple reminders now. It can't be something that's on the agenda this evening or otherwise scheduled for a future public hearing. But first, we're going to go to folks in the audience and see if there's anyone here with us that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them.
Good evening. My name is Sue Nissen, 4408 West 58th Street, and I'm here with Luanne Wadig, 5304 Blake Road, and Randy Holst at 4408 West 58th Street. Mayor Hovland, council, we're here tonight because we're really pleased to see the new snow plowing and ice control policy posted on the city website. The plan is important for sustainability here in Edina and a significant step forward. And we'd also like to thank you, council, for including the commercial applicator limited liability legislation in the city's legislative priorities that were approved in January by the council. The bill was introduced a couple of weeks ago in both the House and the Senate with bipartisan authors, and we're always hopeful at the beginning of the session. We do have an ask of you tonight. Because chloride trends are continuing upward, we have new data from Met Council, both watersheds in Edina, actually, the whole metro area, the trend is like this, unfortunately. Also, because chloride is so local, there's a study from the U.S., 75, over three-quarters of it stays where it's put down. So what we use in Edina from all sources stays here. We believe there is a benefit to the city for a chloride plan that's specific, because chloride is so local and specific to what your area is like. The state and the metro area already have plants, management plans for chloride, and you are currently writing a clean water strategy for the city. To get to clean water, we ask that chloride be included in that process. How to protect the environment and the city's future investments from chloride? How to set track and report chloride reduction goals? There is a large pool of solutions and strategies already existing that we can draw on. It's the right time to get a handle on chloride, and we ask that you include chloride in Edina's overarching clean water strategy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nissen. This morning, our Rotary Group met at the Public Works facility, and we had a presentation by our Public Works Director. Councilmember Jackson and I are part of that morning Rotary Group, and Councilmember Rissler was there as well. And we learned that through the strategies we've put in place, I think, over the years with the encouragement of some of our residents who are really concerned about chloride, our sodium chloride reduction has been about 30% on one of the slides. So as our Public Works folks work to keep our streets safe and the people that are using them safe, and try to balance that against environmental impact, they've been able to, over time, over the last couple of years, reduce that salt usage by 30%, which is laudable, and I know that you folks are pleased about that as well. And we'll keep trying to do better and look at these different strategies. And I wish somebody would come up with an idea for how to use something on streets that dealt with ice other than chloride, but we've got to be mindful of the safety aspects of it as well. Anybody else want to come forward and address the council on a matter of concern to them? It's not on the agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing? Thanks, folks, for being with us this evening. And I'm going to turn to anybody that's in the virtual audience and see if we have anyone waiting to speak to the council. Director Bennerott?
I do have someone waiting to speak with you. Operator, will you please unmute the line of our first caller? And caller, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Director Bennerott gets so excited when we have somebody calling. Go ahead.
David Frankel, 4510 Lakeview Drive. I want to thank the City Council for bringing up some issues I've brought forward regarding Fire Department mutual aid with Minneapolis and with looking at doing more community policing. The one thing I'm not pleased about are the city manager's comments at the last City Council Work Session where he referred to some residents as bad faith actors. Following state law, and I think city information is what residents are allowed to do under state law. It is not the privy of the city manager to provide editorial comments on state law. I am probably one of the bad faith actors, and I don't appreciate being called a name like that. If the city manager wants to do editorialization of issues, I would appreciate it if he did it offline and not in public forums. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I don't have any other callers, but it was meant to have one.
Why don't we wait a moment? And then we will move on and have the city manager's response to community comments from a couple of weeks ago. So you let us know, Director Bennerott, when it's time to move on.
I think it's safe for you to move forward.
Okay. That concludes community comment. I'm going to move now to the city manager for his response to community comments from a couple of weeks ago from our last City Council meeting. Manager Neal.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have any comments to respond to from the previous meeting, but I do from the January 3rd meeting. They were comments and questions raised by Mr. Frankel, who we just heard from. He has posed a number of times questions around our relationship as a city with the Minneapolis Fire Department and how and when we interact with them for operational issues. We have responded to his questions before, but we would like to take this opportunity to give him really a more conclusive and, I think, comprehensive response. And so to do that, I've asked our fire chief to come in, and we have taken Mr. Frankel's comments from the previous meeting. We transcribed them. We broke them down into individual questions, and I've asked Chief Slama if he would respond to those for us tonight. So, Mr. Slama.
Chief, welcome. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Good evening, mayor, and members of the council. As Manager Neal advised, I'll be going through kind of the specific questions. Some of the statements we'll pull together just with responses, making sure that the specific information was accurate and what we have on file. So the first question was, or the first statement was, "City of Edina heavily relies on mutual aid for fire department's support of fires." So what I did was reviewed our data from 2019. There's been 389 fires. Those are structure fires, grasses, vehicle fires, et cetera. And 47 times during that period, mutual aid was utilized. So approximately 12% of the time for incident types that are fire-related involve mutual aid. Another one of the comments was that he, Mr. Frankel, had talked to the Assistant Chief of the Minneapolis Fire Department. So we have a good working relationship with Minneapolis Fire. I contacted Minneapolis Assistant Chief Wes Van Vinkle, and he has advised me that he has never spoken to Mr. Frankel or any Edina resident regarding a response to Edina. Why has Minneapolis never called on mutual aids for fires in Edina, especially in the northeast Edina where the coverage is exceptionally poor? Minneapolis is included on our mutual aid alarm requests, but not the initial alarm. The reason for this decision is not due to the relationship, but rather the operational challenges that exist between the two departments. In high-risk and low-frequency events such as a structure fire, it's important to train together, operate together, and understand those limitations, and work within the similar or same or similar command structure. Suburban communities like ours rely on mutual aid assistance on most significant events and must train and prepare to do so together. Large metropolitan cities such as Minneapolis are unlikely to call for assistance in these events, similar events, as they have the capacity and train to do those internally. Minneapolis Fire Chief, or Assistant Fire Chief Van Vinkle has advised me that even if operational limitations could be addressed between the two departments, they do not have the current capacity to add into their already-record call volumes that they're currently addressing right now. The system would not be mutual if they only provided response to Edina and they never called us for a response to Minneapolis. There was a comment made about the Berry Fire Road and a statement made about whether we were, we knew Minneapolis was called for mutual aid to that fire, and for reasons discussed previously, Minneapolis was not called for mutual aid. Multiple other departments assisted Edina in that fire. The city has built the fire station, the proposed new fire station, and we should have pulled data that we were referring to other fire stations around us. And my response to that is every city is responsible for their own fire protection and making decisions on response facilities and staffing. Mutual aid crews are utilized to front-load these incidents throughout suburban communities especially for high-risk and low-frequency events. Although we, we do assist as we are able, there's no guarantee crews or staff will be available and no obligation to respond from other communities when we call for assistance. Our city is covered, excuse me, all communities must ensure that our own city is covered prior to sending additional resources to another community. There's a comment about the ISO rating of three with other cities as a two or a one, and a statement that's probably around the fact that Edina has one fire station. And ISO is a rating system for fire protection amongst other city protections, and it is a multi-factor response for fire response, resources, stations, staffing, apparatus, even water systems throughout the community. And the ISO rating is not a one-for-one add. So that statement is a complex calculation that is evaluated every two years with the Edina Fire Station Number Two is not an active fire station, it just stores a fire truck. Edina Fire Station Two is an active station. The crew operates an ambulance 24/7. Additional crews are called in to staff the engine at that station on larger events and significant snow events, et cetera. The new fire station proposed, excuse me, the new fire station proposed is not going to do a whole lot of good for northeast Edina. The new fire station proposed better positions resources in the southeast quadrant. That's where call volume is highest in our community. Although the new Station Two does not have an immediate impact on the northeast Edina drive times, the study recommended a third station to serve the growing community, and we continue to follow the study recommendations and move forward with the acquisition of property for, or intend to move forward with Station Three recommendations. Why does Edina not call the City of Minneapolis Fire Department for mutual aid when it makes sense? We've discussed many of the reasons tonight. We continue to work closely with Minneapolis Fire and have a good working relationship. Both departments support each other through the statewide mutual aid response plan that's intended to support disasters and extenuating some circumstances, and will continue to do so. We have an obligation to our community to ensure effective response, and will continue to do so into the future. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the mayor and city council for their continued support to ensure our residents receive high-quality care and response from Edina Fire Department. If you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions for Chief Slama? All right. Thanks for that thorough response.
Thank you.
To one of the concerns or the concerns that were expressed by one of our residents some time ago.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Manager Neal, anything else?
Nothing else.
All right. Let's move on then to the consent agenda. We have a fairly extensive consent agenda. Member Rissler would like to remove Items 6D and 6Z from the consent agenda to discuss those items individually. Is there anyone else on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right. Hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve the, or adopt the items on the consent agenda with the exception of Items 6D and 6Z?
So moved. Second.
Member Rissler moves. Member Jackson, second, see adoption of the items on the consent agenda with the exception of Items 6D and 6Z. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now we will go to Item 6D, which is a second reading of Proposed Resolution 2023-11 and Ordinance Number 2022-13. And those matters deal with revised overall development plan, site plan approval Phase One, and site improvement plan agreement for 7250 France Avenue South. I'm going to turn now to Member Rissler so we can hear what her questions are with regard to that particular matter.
My primary concern is that I was not on council when this first came before council, and so much like the earlier request to remove approving minutes for meetings where I did not attend, that is motivating this. I did go to the site during the weekend and walked along France Avenue. One concern that I do have has to do with protocol that hopefully will be in place so that that sidewalk remains open or that there is a very clear pedestrian detour around that. And this isn't driven by any specific concerns about what the developer is proposing. Rather, it is driven by concerns with what I saw along France Avenue with the U.S. Bank project, where people were actually walking in France Avenue because that sidewalk was closed. And, you know, I think we need to hopefully take measures or put in protocols so that we're not creating dangerous situations. And on a personal note, I did do a ride-along with a police officer last week. It was a wonderful experience, but as I was coming to City Hall, coming north on Wilson, there was a car illegally parked, and, you know, another car was coming down Eden, and I dutifully stopped at the stop sign and then proceeded into the intersection. That car did not stop, and so I stopped, and he turned left in front of my car and looked at me with shock that he did not know that I was there. And I was going to mention it, but as we were pulling out, just beginning our tour, it was noted to me that that car had been ticketed. And we have police officers who are working so hard, really putting in the time, and I think we as council, if there's anything we can do as we're approving projects to ensure that, you know, we've got situations that are safe, you know, what can we do to mitigate? I do also want to say, in fairness, you know, it's possible that vehicle that was parked there had nothing to do with the construction site, but I have noted, you know, as construction is going up, it seems parking and the ability of pedestrians and bikers to move about is sometimes compromised. So those are my big issues.
All right. Thanks, Member Rissler. Understanding your reluctance to vote on something that was preliminarily approved when you weren't on the council, I'll turn to my colleagues with regard to Item 6D and see if one of them wants to move Resolution 2023-11 and Ordinance 2022-13, which involves the second reading. We've already approved it on a first-reading basis of the zoning ordinance amendment, rezoning, revised overall development plan, site plan approval for Phase One, and site improvement plan agreement for 7250 France Avenue South. Is there a motion to adopt those resolutions and ordinances?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce to adopt the motion as stated. We'll reread the whole entire thing again. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of 6D, which is the Resolution 2023-11 and Ordinance 2022-13 on the second-reading basis encompassing all those items that I previously mentioned, including amendment, rezoning, revised overall development plan, site plan approval for Phase One, and site improvement plan agreement for 7250 France Avenue South. All those in favor of adoption of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried.
Abstention.
Abstention?
Abstain.
Thank you. All right. And then, Member Rissler, going down to Item 6Z, we were going to make some Edina Housing Foundation appointments this evening, or it's been proposed that we make those appointments of those two folks that are mentioned there. And you had, I think, inquired of the city manager earlier about the Edina Housing Foundation, want a little bit more background and information, and I'll turn it back to you, Member Rissler.
With this item, again, I did get some questions about why there weren't term limits on these positions, or if there were term limits. We are right in the midst of interviewing people to fill our boards and commissions, I have since learned, and perhaps Manager Neal could speak to why this particular entity is not part of that. And then maybe it would be nice to have somebody from the foundation come at a later meeting and just address the council in the spirit of transparency and educating our public.
Manager Neal.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of council. Yes, the Edina Housing Foundation is, has sort of an interesting role or position within the community. It is a standalone 501(c)(3). It has a five-member board. Two of its members, two of those board positions are appointed by the city council, and the other three positions on the board are appointed by the HRA. So they're all appointed by you. They have, they have three-year terms, but they do not have term limits, and their terms are set by the bylaws of their organization. So they, they control that aspect of their, of their board governance system, and you control who's on their board to begin with. Our custom for our own, for our regular citizen advisory commissions and boards and commissions is that we reappoint folks who want to be reappointed, provided that they are members in good standing. We ask them if they want to be reappointed, and they get a perfunctory reappointment. But we do have for our other boards and commissions term limits. So when a commissioner reaches those limits, they're no longer appointed, and then somebody new gets to go through the process and get an appointment. We don't have that dynamic happening very often at the Housing Foundation. The folks that are on that board tend to be on that board for a long time. The last time we had a new appointee was 2019, and that's when Bernadette Honig was appointed to the board. And when that happened, there was interaction between the city council and the Housing Foundation board and staff. There was an interview process, and that's, that's how that position was filled at that time. The question about could we get the foundation to come and perhaps do a brief report to the council about what they're doing and what they're working on? Absolutely. Anne Swenson is the chair of that group. I'm sure she would be happy to do that at a time of mutual convenience for the council.
All right. And just to be clear, I think, as with our other board and commission activity, when there is a vacancy on the Edina Housing Foundation, they do advertise that, they do position and encourage residents to apply. But what my experience is, it just tends to be a board that gets to be pretty highly specialized in terms of their skill sets. And so the two board members that are up for reappointment, Jeff Huggett and Jerry Gilligan, I think Jeff joined the board way back in 2006, and he's been an executive at Dominion, which is an affordable housing development company for many, many years. And then Jerry Gilligan, who joined the board in 2016, is a retired attorney from Darcy and Whitney and sat where Dave Kendall is sitting in many, many occasions and was our bond counsel for many years. And so he's got, and been, I think, lived in the city for probably over 40 years. So he brings another special skill set that's really valuable to that, that group. So those were the two potential reappointments, Jeff Huggett and Jerry Gilligan. I don't know, Member Rissler, do you feel comfortable moving their appointment, or do you want somebody else to do that?
I feel comfortable moving it, and I do want to thank them for their service.
All right. So we got a motion by Member Rissler to appoint Jerome Gilligan and Jeff Huggett to the Edina Housing Foundation with a term ending 3/1/24. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right. Second by Member Pierce to the motion as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And we thank Jerry Gilligan and Jeff Huggett for their continued service on the Edina Housing Foundation. Now, we're done with consent agenda, and we're going to move on to the one public hearing matter that we have this evening. Director Teague has this matter, and it involves multifamily housing in the city's commercial zoning districts. And Director Teague.
Thank you, mayor, members of the city council. As you recall, back in December, the HRA updated the city's affordable housing policy. Within the city's zoning ordinance, the affordable housing policy is codified in regard to multifamily development in the planned commercial zoning districts. So the ordinance that's in front of you this evening simply updates the zoning ordinance to be consistent with the affordable housing policy that was approved last year. There are two notable changes in the policy. The buy-in fee is increased to $175,000, and two, we're specifying a little more clarity around density requirements. As an example, for a mixed-use development that's at the high end of the density range, anything between 50 and 100% of that density range, we're suggesting that the affordable housing units be included in the development. In an all-residential development that is in the 75 to 100% density range outlined in the comprehensive plan, we're also suggesting that the units be included in the development. Again, that's consistent with the policy. Ultimately, that's a decision that the city council makes at the time of an individual project, but we just wanted to highlight that, that it is more, it is important to get units within the development. Stephanie Hawkinson, our Affordable Housing Development Manager, who authored the policy along with the Housing Foundation, is here to answer any questions that you may have. The planning commission reviewed this ordinance at their last meeting, and they unanimously are recommending approval this evening. And we did not receive any comments on Better Together. With that, I will turn it over to the council for questions.
Questions for Director Teague? I had one, I don't know if I misheard you or not, but my understanding from looking at the proposed change was that if the zoning allows between 50 to 100 units per acre and the residential development is 50 to 87 units per acre, the developer slash owner can elect to include the affordable units in the development, pay the, what we call the buy-in fee, the $175,000 a door, or secure an approved alternative from the council. Is that what you said?
I didn't say it in that detail. You're, you're spot on with what you're, the way you had described it. Yes, there are those options.
And then if you get above that level, if you're in the 88 to 100 units per acre, the development must include affordable units within the building.
Correct.
Correct.
Ultimately, again, it is the council's decision in the end.
And so maybe this is a question for Manager Hawkinson, but I'm wondering why on the more intense development, at the more intense development level, why we still wouldn't allow somebody to, why you're suggesting that we not allow someone to pay the TBI fee in lieu of putting those units in the development? Because I'm thinking of quite a a few units where I think we've, buildings where we've allowed that, where they've got an extensive number of units. And it's actually created quite a nice sum of money for us to be able to use in our affordable housing strategy.
Mayor, council member, I'm Stephanie Hawkinson, the Affordable Housing Development Manager. The reason for that is the policy, when originally written, included a density bonus that said that if you include affordable housing units in your development, you, you can qualify for a density bonus. But the way the zoning is written, and the way the land use policy is written, you cannot have a bonus that exceeds guided land use or guided zoning. So it was somewhat of a misnomer. So what we did was take that concept of a density bonus and said, okay, maximum density is X. If you want maximum density, then you have to include affordable units. So it was the, it was the same concept of offering a density bonus if affordable units were included and turning it around, but having the same outcome.
Okay. Did that cause any questions from any other? Member, Member Rissler?
This is not related to the last question, but my understanding is that a lot of places that do offer affordable housing or any rental also tie, have a lot of fees that are attached. So you have additional fees for parking, you have additional amenity fees and all of that. And I'm just kind of putting that out there.
Me too.
So that as we move forward with projects, if that is indeed the way an entity functions, that we have the total cost in addition to the rent. Do you see what I'm getting at there?
Mayor, council member, that is a requirement right now.
Good.
So any cost for the affordable units, any cost that is required to have that shelter over your head, any mandatory costs has to be included with the maximum rent level. So if the maximum rent for a one-bedroom unit at 50% AMI is $1,100. So if that includes parking and utilities, rent is $1,100. If on top of rent, they pay, the utilities are paid by the tenant and not by the owner, and parking is required, the cost for parking and the cost for utilities is reduced from that $1,100. And then rent is whatever those are minus the mandatory costs.
Thank you, Ms. Powell.
Other questions? Councilmember Jackson, did you have a question?
I did not.
Okay. I guess you were just looking at the, the language of it, the redlining language. All right. This is a public hearing matter. Standby, Manager Hawkinson. Thanks for that assistance, and Director Teague. This is a public hearing matter. I'm going to open this up now for proposed public testimony on the potential adoption of this ordinance. Anyone wishing to testify that's with us in the council chambers, feel free to come forward. All right. I don't see anybody coming forward. Do we have anybody online? There's your phone number again, folks, if you're listening online. I want to testify with regard to this particular matter, this multifamily housing matter, ordinance 2023-03. Feel free to call in.
I don't.
Director Benarot, anybody on the line?
I don't have anyone yet, but we haven't had a full minute go by yet, so I'd recommend we wait, since there is a slight delay in the broadcast. I'll come back to you in one minute, or when I have a caller, whichever's first.
We can see the significant disappointment on your face.
It's true.
So we'll, we'll hang in there with you.
Thank you.
All right. So Director Teague, you would like to keep this matter open for further public testimony until, what date?
Yeah, correct. The, the action that we're requesting is that you close the public hearing at noon on February 13th and continue action to February 21st.
Okay. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves.
I second.
I rang, I seconds. The motion is propounded by Director Teague, which is that we keep this matter open for further public testimony until noon on February 13th, and then deal with the matter at our February 21, 2023 city council meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Carried. All right. That concludes our public hearing portion of the agenda. We're going to move on now to reports and recommendations. And the first matter we have there involves something that we have every meeting, and that is people or organizations generously donating to the city, monetary amounts or in-kind contributions, and we have that this time as well. And to comply with state statute, we need a supermajority of the council to approve such gifts. And this Resolution 2023-15 has one matter on it and involves accepting donations on behalf of the city of Adana. Is there someone that would care to move that matter?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce to adopt Resolution 2023-115, accepting, accepting donations on behalf of the city of Adana. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Carried. So we have one donor this time, actually a family, a family housing, a family housing, family fund. It's a donation of the Adana Art Center by Michelle and Andy Herring and their family fund at the Minneapolis Foundation, a demand of $500 for general use. Andy used to be on the Park Commission, and his wife, Michelle, is a daughter of a former city council member named Peggy Kelly from another era. And her brother as well, Mike Kelly, was on the city council too. So thank you to that Herring Family Fund for that generous donation to the Adana Art Center. And that was where the, the Media Lab, I think it was, that we had over there, was named after Peggy Kelly. So the family continues to have an ongoing interest in things in Adana. So thanks, folks. Then we're going to move on now to the appointment of a member to the Adana School District Community Education Services Advisory Council. Let Manager Neil handle this matter.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is one of those appointments that we missed on our first run on January 3rd. We have a position on the Adana School District Community Ed Services Advisory Council. Their range of, of services can be fairly broad in terms of programming in the community. Having a council member on that council has been helpful to the city in terms of relating and trying to keep a good relationship between the district, particularly community ed, and, and our parks and rec services as well. So the position, there's one position. Generally, they meet quarterly, first Wednesday of the month. But that, I think there's some, some, a little bit of play in that as well. We don't know if that's, if that's been carved in stone for the upcoming year or not, but that's what it has been historically.
Thank you. Any questions for Manager Neil? Is there anyone on the council that has a distinct interest in, in being the council member appointed to the Adana School District Community Education Services Advisory Council? Member Agnew?
I think we're both going for the mic. Yeah, I, I would say that I have a slight interest in this, and I think especially given that when we were going through the overall appointments, I had noted my interest in general in being more connected to the school board. And I get that this is a slightly different position, but just in general interested in being connected to our school district here in the community.
Member Rissler?
I support Member Agnew in that role. Do we need two, or are you looking for just one?
Just need one.
Okay.
Do we need an alternate?
We don't generally have an alternate for this one.
Okay.
Okay.
No, I think that would be great.
All right. So, Member Rissler, you're moving the appointment of Councilmember Agnew?
Yes.
All right. So, Member Rissler moves the appointment of Councilmember Kate Agnew to the Adana School District Community Education Services Advisory Council. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Pierce to the motion as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Carried. All right. Thank you for agreeing to serve, Member Agnew. And now we're coming to a couple of items that are quite interesting, I think. The Energy and Environment Commission Report and Recommendations on something we asked them to take a look at, which was single-bag regulation. And I think Grace Hancock, our sustainability manager, has the introduction. And then we've got a presentation by our vice chair of the Energy and Environment Commission, Michelle Haran. But I'll let Grace Hancock, our sustainability manager, set the, set the stage for this conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, council. I am here to introduce your next topic for consideration, the Energy and Environment Commission's report and recommendation regarding plastic and other merchant carryout bags. As a reminder, in 2022, the council approved a work plan item for the EEC to build off of its study and report five years prior, 2017, regarding plastic and other single-use bag management in Adana. In 2022, council asked EEC to make a recommendation on this topic. So tonight, we're going to hear from Vice Chair Michelle Haran to share the EEC's work, their recommendation, and to seek your feedback. So I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chair Haran to share the commission's report and recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Hancock. And Commissioner Haran, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Michelle Haran. I am a member of the Energy and Environment Commission and chair of the Plastic Bag Working Group. I'm here with two other members of the working group, Nicole Mian and John Curry. And I would like to thank the EEC and the other working group members whose work and passion went into researching, learning, and reporting on what we are here to discuss tonight. Those members are Bill Sirkz, Ashani Shah, and Dina Sukha. Tonight, we ask city council to pass the merchant carryout bag ordinance so we can begin to reduce the number of single-use bags in our community and instead reinforce the more sustainable behavior of reusing the bags we already own. In accordance with current Minnesota law, the five-cent fee that businesses will charge for a merchant carryout bag is not a tax and will be retained by businesses to use as they choose. The ordinance should be in tandem with an outreach and education program for those impacted businesses and their customers, both before and after the ordinance takes effect. We ask that on approval, council allow, in addition to the EEC's 2023 work plan, to develop an outreach and education program that would be implemented in partnership with city staff. In adopting this ordinance, we are directing, directly addressing goals established by the city and the passage of the Climate Action Plan in 2021. A reduction in the number of carryout bags used will decrease the negative impacts on health and the environment caused by the creation, transportation, and end-of-life management of these bags. The biggest benefit of a fee on a merchant carryout bag is its ability to change behavior. Studies show that charging a small fee is effective at changing people's actions more so than incentives or bans. A merchant carryout bag is any bag that is provided by a merchant to a customer for the purpose of transporting food or merchandise out of the establishment. This definition applies to bags made of all types of materials, plastic of all thicknesses, paper, compostable, and reusable bags provided by the merchant. This is the moment to consider this ordinance because maintaining the status quo has not moved the dial on waste reduction nor gotten us closer to meeting our climate action goals. Voluntary bring-your-own-bag programs and incentives have not yielded any significant increase in reusable bag use. Plastic bag recycling programs are inconvenient, relegated to drop-off sites, with recycling rates of less than 10%. With Adana's high participation rate of curbside recycling, we are still, we are still challenged to keep up with the rate of waste reduction. And even if merchant carryout bags get a second use, ultimately they will all end up in a landfill or incinerated. We need to start putting in place strategies of reduction. We need to do something different if we're going to make meaningful progress toward our climate action goals. This ordinance is a good place to start. A lot of focus is placed on single-use plastic bags, and with good reason. Plastic bags are made from fossil fuels, specifically ethylene from natural gas. They also tend to be the most visible litter-causing single-use bag. Although plastic bag litter is not a huge problem in Adana, because of its inherent properties, it will always have the potential to become a nuisance. Ironically, I took this photo last fall while I was walking home to my house in Morningside. Alternatives for plastic merchant-back carryout bags, such as paper, compostable, and reusable, also come with an environmental footprint and are not necessarily better. For example, paper bags contribute less to the impacts of littering compared to plastic bags. However, plastic bags, if landfilled, are relatively inert, while paper bags in landfills produce methane with high climate change effects. Compostable bags do not guarantee a lower environmental impact, and in some environmental categories can have higher negative effects than other bags. Unless they are used multiple times, oops, did I say compostable?
Compostable.
Okay. Think I meant reusable. Unless they're used multiple times, reusable bags can have a higher negative impact on the, on the environment than other bags. A cotton bag needs to be used 50 to 100 times, and thicker reusable, um, plastic bags need to be used 10 to 20 times before it's better for the environment than a standard plastic bag. Next. This ordinance will affect any Adana merchant that sells or provides merchandise goods or materials directly to a customer, including food and beverages. Although we do not believe there should be many exemptions, we do acknowledge that there are some types of businesses and customers that should be excluded. Due to their specific functioning or packaging, not all bags will be covered under this ordinance. This list aligns with the city of Minneapolis's list of excluded types of bags. Over the years that I've worked with sustainability issues in the city and the school district, I've frequently been approached by residents with the request to get rid of plastic bags. This is the second time that plastic bag regulation has been on the EEC's work plan in recent years. However, the issue of plastic bags was initially brought to the attention of the EEC when a resident action group called Adana Go Green was formed in 2012. This is an issue that residents expect the city to take action on. Our very own hometown hero, Fatouin Ismail, engages seamstresses in Adana to create reusable tote bags called Danville to replace single-use bags. She says, and I quote, "We have been climate refugees once, and we don't want to be climate refugees again." Single-use carryout bags are a prominent environment issue for many Adana residents, and there is support for an ordinance that we reduce the use of such bags. We approached our recognized green businesses and a few other local small businesses, and learned that many are already taking steps to reduce the use of carryout bags and support the reasons behind the ordinance. Gear Running Store at 44th and France is owned by my brother-in-law Paul Haran and my daughter Maggie Haran. When I asked Maggie about any obstacles, she said that she does not see any difficulties with implementing the fee. It's relatively easy to make the necessary changes on her point-of-sale system. Her main concern is that her staff would be treated rudely by customers when upholding the ordinance, as many of them are high schoolers. She hopes that the education and signage would help back up all her employees. We spoke with a variety of Minneapolis' businesses that are already working under a similar ordinance. Most of them enforce the fee, although not all. They agree with the principles behind the legislation and report that many customers forego the bag or just accept the fee without complaint. One business owner told us, and I quote, "Those customers who do get annoyed will usually refuse a bag, and while it can be frustrating in the checkout experience, it is ultimately the whole point." As of March 2021, the United States has implemented 566 policies related to merchant carryout bags. Listed here are just a few cities and their immediate impacts realized from such policies. Charging a modest fee for all merchant carryout bags has proven to be the most effective way to lessen reliance on them. In both Minnesota, or, in Minnesota, both Minneapolis and Duluth have merchant carryout bag ordinances in place. The Minneapolis ordinance is similar to what we're proposing, a five-cent fee for all carryout bags. Duluth's ordinance requires a five-cent fee only for plastic bags. More and more large companies are also taking initiative to tackle this issue. Best Buy charges 10 cents for all plastic bags, and Target, CVS, and Walgreens are piloting reusable bag rental systems in select locations. Once an ordinance is approved, developing a reasonable implementation timeline that engages all stakeholders is key to a successful engages all stakeholders is key to a successful rollout. To assist businesses through this transition, an education and awareness period after passage will be important. The timeline should include the date in which the ordinance is officially implemented. This date is when businesses are required to post signs informing customers about the bag fee, and any enforcement will begin. The Plastic Bags Working Group's research and analysis of merchant carryout bag regulation across the U.S. and globally leads us to the conclusion that the city of Edina needs to take immediate steps to drastically reduce customer and business reliance on merchant carryout bags and plastic packaging of any kind. We recommend Council pass this ordinance requiring businesses to charge a five-cent bag fee for all merchant carryout bags. We can no longer ignore the impacts of single-use products. We can no longer rely on recycling as the answer to our waste problem. We need to change the model. While lessening our consumption on merchant carryout bags will not solve all environmental problems, it is a significant step we can take to protect our environment, minimize impact to human health, and begin to move towards more sustainable behaviors. I thank you for your time and attention and consideration. I would now like to invite the working group members, Nicole and John, to join me for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Heran. We'll let your colleagues join you as well. Questions for Commissioner Heran or any other folks from the team? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, thank you, team, for this report. It is really well-written and very informative. I appreciate all the details that you went into, especially the stakeholder outreach. That was really helpful for me as a decision-maker. So, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, a lot of our grocery stores have adopted a self-bagging lane. Can you tell me, how does that work in Minneapolis? And how would this fee be applied when the customer is choosing how many bags to use?
I can tell you, based on my experience living in California, there's an option on most of those point-of-sale systems where you select "bring your own bag." So, it's an on-your-owner thing. But when we would check out in California where there were bag fees, I would select...
Would you identify yourself too?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Nicole Meehan. Hello. Thank you. So, we would just select the option that we had brought our own bag.
Okay. But if I forgot my bag, how can I... Does it get charged?
Then it would be charged. The five-cent fee is just added on to your...
Okay. Regardless of the number of bags I would use? If I got three bags?
At the end, when you're checking out, it would say how many bags?
Oh, okay.
And then you would say, "Three bags."
Okay.
So, it's an honor system.
Okay.
But that was what I recall of the point-of-sale system there.
Great. All right. That's very helpful. Thank you. Yeah.
Another question?
I do, I have. So, it seemed to me, when I read this report, there was a segment in here that talked about the retailers' use of funds from gathering this. I hope that there's no restriction on that. I don't think you recommended that, but am I remembering that correctly, that there was an issue that was addressed?
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. John Curry, I'm at 6620 Galway Drive. And that is correct. There's no restriction on the use of funds. Oftentimes, as we cited, 566 cities or municipalities have adopted something like this, the business will put it into education, or outreach, or environmental sustainable programs.
Okay. Terrific. And then, this is actually for you, Ms. Hancock. As we roll this out, do we have staff capacity to do this education process so that it is implemented properly?
Yes, we do have staff capacity for the engagement that's really needed to both develop an ordinance that's effective and notify residents and businesses in a way that empowers them to participate.
Terrific. All right. Well, very good work, team.
Thank you. Councilmember Pierce?
Thank you. So, I have to look in the mirror on this. So, just, this irritates me to no end. Whenever I go to a grocery store, and I'm not thinking about it, so now I work in Minneapolis, and the first time I went to Lund's and Byer Lee's to get lunch, and I'm going through the self-checkout, and I get charged, whatever it is, 10 cents for a bag. And I was just irritated the entire day by that. So, just being completely honest. But then, the next time I went to Lund's and Byer Lee's, I also forgot the second time. But I was a little less irritated, and I just walked out with my lunch in my hand rather than paying for the bag. And then, every time after that, I did the same thing. And then, I kind of got over it. But that is going to be the experience if we do this. A lot of people are going to be irritated by it. And for me, it made me feel like government was imposing a requirement on me. And it just didn't feel good the first time or the second time. And now, so my wife and I, we try to remember, we have all these reusable, whether they're Lululemon or Everreeve or whatever, bags. And we try to remember, take the Costco bag with you so that you don't have to use the bag. But we don't always remember. But I know that that is going to be, if we move forward, that's going to be an issue. Lots of people are going to be irritated by that. And it will further irritate me if vendors are telling us that their high school clerks are getting yelled at for this, just like when we had the mask ordinance. And so, this reminds me of understanding, and you said the words, "People understand in principle what we're trying to do." And so, in principle, I understand what we're trying to do. I can lean into the fact that it is irritating, and it will irritate me in Edina when I forget to bring the bag, because I would have voted for this. So, I had a couple of points. One, I was a little confused. We got some emails from people that were in support, and some of those emails only referenced plastic bags, but the ordinance is any bag. Is that right? So, if I'm going to Jerry's, and Jerry's, I take a paper bag, I would still pay the same 5 cents for that. That doesn't quite make sense to me. If we have an active recycling program, that part didn't quite make sense to me. And I know some cities do plastic bags and not paper or compostable bags. And so, that was one thing I wanted to clarify, but when you read through it, you can definitely see that this is any merchant carryout bag. The second thing I wondered, and this was in your presentation, but I would like to understand more about the participation rates, but I'm just not sure what numbers really matter. And so, your slide shows the usage dropped by, I think, was that by the city?
Was that Chicago?
For Chicago, for sure. I just wasn't sure how those numbers were... So, how were those numbers calculated? I guess is the question. Would merchants report that they're purchasing fewer single-use bags?
From my understanding is that when they, before they put in Chicago's a tax, before they had the tax applied, there was the amount of customers using disposable bags had then decreased post-tax. I'm not quite sure how they gathered that information.
Yeah.
It's just what was reported on their sites in the city.
And so, that really is the question. And so, I, if you guys are familiar, some of you might be, there's a series of books called Freakonomics. And so, I love that series where they really talk about data, numbers, and assessing things in a different way to make sure you get to the outcome that you're looking for. And so, with that metric, I'm just not sure if that is, if having the tax is going to drive us to that outcome. And so, that's why I started with, in principle, I get it. And then, I gave you an example of where I actually stopped using bags because I was being charged. And so, that would seem like there's a cause and effect. But I don't know, from looking at the data, if it really will drive that outcome. And so, the... Oh, go ahead.
I'll let you finish your question.
And so, where I'm going is, I would feel more comfortable if we understand the direction we're going, and we say, "You know what? We're going to try this. It appears to have worked in other cities. And so, let's try it, but here are the goals that we're going to measure against." And I'm totally making this up, Grace. If we're going to go a year or two years, and we're going to look to see, are we actually getting the outcome that we wanted? And if we're not, then we're going to look at doing something different. But right now, I think these bag ordinances are the solutions that others have used. And I agree with trying it. I'm just not convinced that it actually is going to get us the result that we want. But in principle, I agree with the desired outcome and would be willing to give it a shot. But I would actually require us to come back and be clear about what metric we're going to use to judge whether or not this is successful. And if it's not, then we're going to propose something different on some kind of timeframe that we'd have to discuss.
Somebody have a comment? Do you... Go ahead.
I was, earlier, I thought maybe I was going to address a question, but it sounds like that was just a comment, so I'll leave it there.
Well, let's hear your comment.
So, and again, I didn't state my address. I'm at 6124 Ewing Avenue South, Nicole Meehan. I think it was, I think it was just that, that it annoyed you enough, and that, yes, people are annoyed by this. I, too, was irritated, and even now, kick myself when I'm in Minneapolis, or, you know, if I'm in Chicago, if I'm in a place where I know I'm going to be charged, it's annoying to be like, "Oh, well, I could have just left." But there are also times when I do want the bag. I don't mind having a bag sometimes, so... But it becomes habit, and I think that's the thing that we're seeking to change, is habit. So, over time, those complaints, the whining, the frustration, yes, there's always going to be people who are upset by it, but over time, I think it becomes habit, and more and more people just adopt it and accept it. In Chicago, what I think, and it was in the written report, I think they have some of the best research to look at the metrics that you're talking about. So, in 2016, they implemented a ban on thin plastic bags. And what they saw as an unforeseen result of that was that a lot of vendors went to thicker bags, which, as you heard in the presentation, can actually have a worse effect unless it's used multiple times. So, when they repealed that, theirs was a tax. This is just a fee. When they repealed that and put a new ordinance in place, it was a tax on all bags, and they saw that that was what was most effective. And that was that the cities that we looked at most closely were ones where we're saying, "Let's not look at just where it's a ban, but where it's a fee on all types of bags, or it's a ban and a fee." And the research and best practices suggest that those are the ones that are most effective, that when it's just a ban, then there's the unintended consequence of more paper bags. And when it's, you know, when, so when you have the fee, people are really having to examine, "Do I really want this bag?" Whether it's paper or plastic, or it's a vendor offering me a thicker plastic bag, whatever it may be. Do I really want it? And that's when we get the behavior change. So, I think part of what we're asking, and it was written into the draft of the ordinance, is asking the merchants to report on how many bags they are getting. And if that data's being reported to the city, then that's where we could analyze, okay, yeah, from pre-starting date of the ordinance, and then a year after, where did it really make a difference? Provided that data coming from the merchants would be accurate and consistent. Thank you.
If you have anything to follow up? Okay. Member Risher?
So, Manager Hancock, with this program, and I think I'm going to offer a different narrative, and I do, it does take a while to get used to putting those reusable bags in your car. And I remember going to a talk many, many years ago by Ed Bagley Jr., and he was saying, "It took me six months before I actually did it." And here is somebody who is so into really kind of moving forward in terms of protecting the environment. But this program would make it possible for merchants to use that 5 cents in interesting ways, right? I mean, I know when I go to certain places, I'm asked, "Would you like to donate your 5 cents to this particular cause?" And it's really interesting, and I learned about something. And it could be local things that we support, you know? Is this something the merchants could do with that 5 cents?
Yes, the merchants would have full discretion for how to use that 5-cent fee. I think, as Vice Chair Heran mentioned, part of the engagement and education campaign would be to offer ideas for merchants for how they might use the fee. But we certainly see this example in neighboring cities in Minnesota and also nationwide, where they might offer to allow the customer to donate the fee to some organization. They might use it to offset other costs, like for our merchants who are complying with the Green to Go ordinance here in Edina, that could be a way for them to offset that additional cost. Or choosing their own donation-based place that they, as a corporation like the Target or the Lund's, these larger corporations who might even have their own foundations, that they might funnel this fee revenue to.
Member Agnew, questions?
Well, I want to start with a narrative now, too, since everyone else is doing it. So, I remember, I think I was in middle school or maybe elementary school, I'm aging myself here, when they had, you could smoke in a restaurant, and then they eliminated that. And I remember, both of my parents were smokers, and they were so upset. And I just remember, they were like, I was like, "Yeah, but I don't want you to be able to smoke when I go out to a restaurant either," right? And I think that that's probably a little bit more of a visceral reaction now, especially given that it's been 15, 20 years, right? And I think that we are now used to it. And so, I think, you know, part of your discomfort or the annoyance of it is, in some ways, maybe the point, right? Like, that's what causes your brain to react of like, if you don't ever get kind of frustrated about it, then you might never actually remember to bring your bag. And so, I think that it's really interesting that we're kind of thinking about it in this way, because ultimately, right, climate change is not going to be pleasant or easy as we're making adaptations for it. And I think that this is just one small way that we, as a city, can like, start to make impacts in measurable ways, which is why I really like your idea of, is there a way we can measure it? And I know that you had a lot of baseline data in there already. And so, I would love to, building off of Member Pierce's suggestion, like, figure out, is it 20% reduction in two years? I don't know what that right number is, but I do like making an assumption, going out and testing, and then being able to circle back and say, "Did this achieve the outcome that we wanted it to?" I also think that, there is a question in here, I promise. I think it's interesting to think through, and even Member Pierce kind of whispered anecdotally, I think that there are some places where if you bring your own bag, you can get 5 cents back, right? So, maybe there's some creativity, too, of, and I know, you know, we could potentially include that as an encouragement to these locations that are actually implementing this fee. Could they then use some of those to kind of offset encouraging people to bring their own? Again, I don't really know exactly what that should look like, but just as an idea from Member Pierce that I then stole to potentially take back, I just, I thought it was a really good idea. And I think, too, the question in here is, when I was reading through the documents, I think I had read a minimum of a 5-cent fee. And then, in the table, it includes references to multiple locations, some that charge as high as, I think, 25 cents. And there was Colorado, Illinois, Massachusetts, and then, I think, also more in Colorado, that had a 10-cent fee. And so, I'm curious how we landed on 5 cents, and if 10 cents, in your opinion, is better. better.
You know, they have found that just a minimum of five cents has had significant impacts on people's behavior. So I, we also wanted to be considerate to the surrounding cities that have, like Minneapolis that has a five cent, just to make it easier. But we, you know, the higher, we have heard from places that, you know, the higher it is, the more impactful it is. But we landed at five cents just to be considerate with, you know, businesses that have locations in Minneapolis as well as here, just to make it a little less confusing, less work. So that was really the reason why we settled at five. But it does, it has been shown that five cents is very impactful. And a lot of the research shows that people just don't like to pay for something that used to be free or what they see as valueless. For a lot of us who we get free bags, that doesn't have any value for then us to be paying for it is annoying.
Thank you. I think, and honestly, now I don't remember if it was in this section of the packet or in another section, but it also, our packet this evening included information on, you know, average median income. And it compared Minneapolis to Edina. And if I did my, my math right, it looks like we're approximately 64% higher for average median income in Edina, which I guess this is more of a like data point for the rest of the council of, as we're considering this and potentially making a recommendation in drafting up an ordinance, we might wanna consider, is five cents, is 10 cents the right amount? And maybe even to your point, Member Pierce, we don't, maybe we don't know. Maybe there's not a right answer between those two. But maybe that could also be tied into an opportunity to test and verify and then potentially iterate down the road. So, thank you.
So when I go out in our garage and I see, my wife has collected all these film plastic bags to give to one of her friends who has a dog, so she can use it for the dog. I see they're reused there. But when I see those bags, I can't stand those bags. When I see them at the grocery store and they ask me, you want paper or plastic? I always say, paper. The, it's, it's, I suppose, there's a duality to it. I mean, I can't stand the idea that film plastic hanging around forever for 900 years or whatever your data was. And I like the idea of getting a pla, a paper bag because I use it for my recycling. So it's not going in the landfill. It's, it's gathering the things in the kitchen that can go in recycling in that single sort thing, and I'm throwing it in the recycle bin. I might get used to paying a nickel for that bag to be able to use it for recycling. I haven't thought that one through yet. But of course, then it was, you're in my territory. All of a sudden, you know, I, there's something I like here. I like getting a free paper bag because I feel like I can use it over again for recycling. And if I'm using it over again for recycling, why should I have to pay for it? Isn't that, aren't I doing something that's valuable? So, I don't know, that's, it's a member Pierce's point that he was making right at the beginning was that, that he, the film plastic is one thing, the paper bag to me is another. But I also get the fact that when it goes into the landfill, there's some greenhouse gas production. How much there is, I don't know. But at the end of the day, you, you can't help but ask yourself the question, and this is, you, you know, you got a mayor who's involved in climate mayors and trying to do some things, and our town has been really great about this green strategy. What difference does it make? What, what's the bottom line here? What difference does it make? Is it just all about optics or just doing what we can, where we can and when we can? What is the bottom line?
If I can be honest, it's in the climate action plan of, that the city passed, that this council passed. I don't know if that was a rhetorical question, but.
Something that we thought was an important element of what we wanted to do.
By 2025, single-use plastics in Edina, you're seeking to eliminate them. So this is a positive step in that direction.
Have you, have you seen any data from any town that deals with what percent of paper bags are used for recycling?
No, but I can personally say that I, again, I changed some of my own habits. I used to put mine in plastic bags and then I found out that those snag when I put them in the recycle bin, that that causes problems for the recycling equipment. So then they were in paper and then one day I didn't have a paper bag and I thought, well, I can just throw this in the single sort recycle, it's all gonna, I don't need the paper bag. But it's just that consciousness of changing habits.
It's that habit thing.
But I, no, I don't have any exact data, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Pierce, you also mentioned the single-use plastic as maybe being the easier policy to go after. And when I joined the committee, I thought plastic is what we were doing. It's fun to look down your nose with moral superiority at those plastic users because I use the paper bag, right? But you, when you dig into the research on it, if you just want it to be about optics, you can do the plastic bag. But if you really wanna make a difference policy-wise and for climate change, you have to look at all of the costs of all the various types of bags, including transportation, manufacturing, disposal. Reusing a paper bag for recycling is great, but you're only gonna reuse it once or twice maybe. It's a great thing to do, but ultimately that's gonna end up in the landfill or the burner, the HERC burner over here with its own environmental consequences. And I would just add to this that if I need to buy a bag for a nickel for my recycling, I go to the grocery store once a week or so, that's $2.60 at the end of the year. So this is about social change. It's about conversations we have with ourselves, our families and our neighbors. The year-long education and outreach campaign will help kind of, I don't know, tamper down any sort of opposition that people might have to this when they do get that first nickel fee at the checkout.
One of the, one of the cities that I was a little bit intrigued with was Newton, Massachusetts. It says, if the bags are provided to customers, the bag shall be either recyclable paper bag. And I don't even know if I, if I go to Juries or Lunds, I don't think I see that little recycle symbol on the bag. And I don't know how much more it costs for them to buy a bag that says recyclable on it, or a re, and then it says, or a reusable checkout bag. The, the bag shall be either recyclable paper bag or reusable checkout bag. A retail establishment that provides any type of checkout bag should sell it for no less than 10 cents. So this is like Member Pierce's story. I was thinking about being in Paris one time with my wife, who's a retired French teacher, and I went down to the corner store and they, I got some things and they put it in a, I think I maybe put it in a plastic bag at the checkout and then I got charged for it. And I was irritated about that, but right next to, right next to it, they had, you could buy a bag that was reusable for maybe one frank. I mean, it was, it was something really reasonable, for the equivalent of a dollar. So I don't know, that, Member, Agnew might be making a great point that it's, he gets a little jarring at first and then it's conditioning, and others have said the same thing. But I am left scratching my head a little bit about the paper. I have to admit that. Member Risher.
Building off of what you said, the cost, you know, would it cost more for the grocery store to have that recycling stamp on it? The grocery store is paying for those plastic bags and those paper bags. Let's just acknowledge that. And that's got to be built into their operating costs in some way and passed on to the consumer. So at least I think we should acknowledge that. And it's not just this magical free thing that is there.
Yeah, well, I mean, to that, to that point, I was looking at some of the data you had pulled from Lunds and Barley's and Juries. And this is just in the two weeks before Christmas. If Lunds is selling, using $250,000 paper bags, that's $12,500 they're picking up in two weeks off paper bags. If, if people still want a paper bag and don't bring their own bag. And 75,000 plastic bags is 3,750 bucks. So, and we're, and we're telling them they can use the money for whatever they want. And so at a Member Risher's point, maybe we say, well, buy, buy something that has a recycle sign on it or.
Actually, that wasn't my point. But, I mean, I, I think we need to acknowledge that when we're, you know, talking about a nickel for a paper bag, the merchant probably has to pay, you know, somewhere. And I don't know how much do they have to pay for a paper bag, but it's something. So there is that. But I think this is a way to make people really kind of think about what they're doing. And it does take time, you know, to change those habits. And, you know, we can say, what does it really do? But we need to do what we can do, and this is something that we can do. And it's gonna take a lot of, maybe some little things. This could be kind of a big thing though, because, you know, who knows if this makes somebody think, oh, well, what else could I do? So there's, there's that. You know, it could be a gateway action that leads to something greater in terms of trying to reduce one's carbon footprint.
Yeah, good points. Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you. It seems to me, Commissioner Haran, that in the previous report that was put together on this, there was a study about that there's quite an environmental impact of bags, not just their methane when they're decomposing, but also a lot of water use in their creation. Is that correct?
Yeah, and throughout the whole process. So with all bags across the board, it's the creation of the bag, getting the raw materials, the transportation, the then end of life and usage, that all creates a lot of greenhouse gases for one. And other, in, environmental, there's like acidification, land use issues, your station, I don't actually really know if that's a word, I think I made that up. But, so there's other environmental impacts along the way. And actually, when they, when people are starting to just ban plastic bags, they're finding out that that was actually, had one of the least environmental impacts when you took, compared, even compared to a plastic, a paper bag. So that's why we kind of treat them all the same, because if you eliminate plastic bags, then you'll get an increase in use of paper, and paper bags are not the answer either. So there's no real good, and even reusable bags, like I said, if you don't reuse them a lot, they are highly resource-intensive. So we gotta kind of take all of these the same. There are hybrid models where you can put a fee on everything, but you ban plastic. That's kind of like the next step of hybrid, if you want it, if your goal is to get rid of plastic bags. But I think the big issue here is also just to decrease waste and creation of stuff. We, they're just, they're just saying we can't recycle our way out of our waste problem, like I had mentioned in the presentation. We are creating too much stuff and waste and we can't, and we're not capturing it all through recycling. So we have to stop making the stuff and we have to find a way to make people not rely. So I think this is really, we need to look at this as a waste reduction. And behavior change is hard, and we're finding that just a little bit of fee does move the needle. So I think the end game is reduction instead of recycling. Like, paper can only be reused seven times before it has to go into the landfill or wherever it goes. Plastic bags, like I said, isn't necessarily getting to the recycling bin. So we need something else. So we hope that this is one way that we can start moving to reduction and being conscious of our usage of our resources.
Thank you.
I forgot to mention that, like my colleagues, I thought you guys did a superb job on this report. It was really comprehensive and gave us a chance to really do some good thinking about it or.
Thank you. We have a really good working group that worked on it, so.
One last thing.
Go ahead, Member Jackson.
I really wanna stick with the five cents for now, because I wanna minimize the confusion for the retailers. So we've got, we do have retailers, there are both Minneapolis and Edina. So I would prefer we stick with the five cents and then we can change it.
How do you feel about Member Pierce's idea about a pilot program?
A pilot program?
That's basically what he's talking about, I think.
Yeah, so, oh.
Member Pierce.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I, I do wanna be crystal clear, like I use these examples because it's important to me to just talk through how it's gonna impact me personally. So that's why I, I use these examples. I agree in principle what we're trying to do, but when I read through this, like, we're not trying to tax bags, right? We have a bigger goal. And so we may try something that might work, it may not, but we should keep, we should keep innovating and trying different things. And the example I'll use is composting. Lots of people were irritated by the composting. And so we finally got to a point, and I don't remember who said this, it might have been when Kevin Staunton was on council. But whatever was said made me go look at my, my bill. And I found that, you know what, I don't need this giant trash can anymore, trash bin anymore. So I downsized it from the, I don't know, 96 to the 64, and now I think we could go to the 32 or whatever it is. And so when you started thinking about it in those terms, then it was, yeah, this is actually saving me money. And so now I'm not even thinking about the headache of now rolling out another bin all the time, but I, now I see the benefit for it. And I, you know, we do it now religiously. Now, the whole family is like, well, you can't put that in there. That has to go there. Dad, you're doing that wrong. And that's irritating me now too. And so that's what I'm trying to, to get across, that we have to, we have to understand the bigger picture, which you guys have talked about. You had some data in here. I, I don't know if the data that, I, I think we need to measure our data to make sure that we're getting towards the goal that we have. And, and what I had mentioned to the mayor is the concept of that, whether you call it a pilot program or, or you, you set your criteria and you just, you set your goals and you just say after a certain period of time, we're gonna look at what we've achieved. And if we're good, great. If not, we're gonna tweak it. And so that's the way I was, was, was thinking about it, as opposed to just saying, yep, it's five cents and we're gonna go with five cents. I don't know that five cents is the right one or not. I agree with Member Jackson saying, well, maybe we start there because we don't wanna confuse people. Okay, that makes sense. But let's create what we think, be sure we're clear how we're gonna measure it, and then iterate as we go.
Yeah, Member Pierce, I'll just chime in. I think there is an opportunity to iterate, to institute an ordinance, go through a year, see what needs to be amended. The other option that comes to mind is a phased approach. So Edina's Efficient Building Ordinance began by requiring buildings of the largest size, 100,000 square feet or larger, to comply with the ordinance in year one. That was a bit of a learning year for everybody. It was also 2020, so there are many reasons why it was. But then in subsequent years, buildings of smaller sizes had, came into compliance and city staff were able to adjust how the program was implemented to accommodate new needs, better understanding of needs along the way. That could be an option that staff explores with, with this ordinance structure as well.
Other, other thoughts? I was sitting here thinking again about that experience at that Paris store. And I know I can distinctly remember them looking at me like when I pulled that plastic bag, that was like, what is wrong with you? You know, and they were kind of looking at the reusable bag. And I didn't want a reusable bag, because I was probably leaving town the next day and, you know, I had plenty of them at home. So I don't, then I was sitting here thinking, well, what about the people that work in the paper industry, you know, and, and make these bags? But, you know, if, if the question were, what about coal? You know, I'd say, hell, coal, that's gotta go, you know? And there's thousands of people that worked in the coal industry in West Virginia and, and so, you know, maybe the old mayor needs a little bit of thinking time and educate, more education, even though, you know, I'm like everybody else sitting up here and all of you that we care about the planet we live on and we wanna make sure it stays as safe and healthy as it can possibly be, especially healthy. So this was helpful to me in terms of understanding where you were going and that thoroughness of that report helped a great deal too. So are folks inclined to go that next step and ask that a, a ordinance be drafted that we can take a look at?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, that staff be directed to write an ordinance that, this must be you, staff. It's kind of like, it was like, it was like you had a whole group of people to work with. You know, get all those people to help you. Write an ordinance that updates city code that merchants be charged a five cent fee, a charge of five cent fee to customers for carryout bags and implement an outreach plan to inform residents and businesses of this requirement, with the notion that this might be something that takes place in, as I understand it, 2024. So we got plenty of lead, much, a great deal of lead time. Okay. We got the motion, we got the second. Any further discussion?
Question.
Question? Question?
So I did like, so thinking about the fee. And I totally understand, Member Jackson. But I do think if you're writing the ordinance, this says you're going to do it with a five cent. But I thought Member Agnew's point is really pointed, especially in our community. Like, we don't want, we, we won't achieve what we're looking for if, if people are thinking, oh, it's just a nickel. Sure. Right? And so I don't know that the five cents is the right, the right fee or not.
So we could change that because all we're doing now is directing the right to this ordinance. And if we want to take the five cent fee in preliminary approval or first reading and change it to 10 cents, have that conversation again when it comes back to us for
Okay.
conversation, or even in second reading, it still could be changed.
Okay.
At least we get them started on something.
So in writing the ordinance, then that must imply that there's still work to be done to figure all those pieces out.
We have to approve what gets done. So we're just asking them to show us something that we could potentially adopt and have a conversation about.
Thank you.
Is that helpful?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. So we got a motion by Member Pierce, second by Member Jackson to direct staff, Grace Hancock, to write an ordinance that updates city code that merchants charge a five cent fee to customers for carryout bags and implement an outreach plan to inform residents and businesses of this requirement with the notion that this would be something that takes effect in 2024. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Really, yeah, thank you so much for that good work. And Chair, thanks for coming over. As well, and they've got, yeah, you've got many folks here. You know, before we start the next matter, which is another really interesting topic, accessory dwelling units. I was thinking I wanted to talk to my colleagues about this because I see this as a really multifaceted issue, just like we saw in some of the material. And I got to thinking as I was reading it and contemplating having this conversation tonight, would it be better to start this whole conversation in a work session? Where we can have a little bit more time and open dialogue to talk about ADUs? And, and at least that's what I was thinking, that I'd, I'd rather start this work in a work session and have those conversations there. But I'm, I'm amenable to doing whatever my colleagues want to do. But that was at least one idea I had from reading it. Manager Neil, first, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. That may be a good idea. Our, your situation with this particular issue and at this point in our calendar for work sessions is that it really would put this off at least a month and a half and maybe two, just because you've got that much, that much kind of scheduled, firmly scheduled in terms of work sessions of, of issues that you've asked to talk about in work session before.
Anybody else have thoughts on the matter, Member Richard?
I don't necessarily see those being, well, I, I think if we were to go that route, we still should hear what is, you know, planned because then we could have a more informed dialogue.
Number Agnew.
Thank you. I also think that this first stage is really just asking to go to the next step. And I think that there would be a lot of opportunity throughout that to be a part of what could that or should that look like? I think in the presentation, we'll see that there are a lot of questions that we need to really think about as a city. And granted, you know, the Planning Commission and others will hopefully do a lot of that input. But I, I think that there will be more opportunity as this progresses, such that I don't think we would need to have that a part of even like the first working session discussion to align on what should it look like? I think this is really saying, should we think about what that should look like?
Yeah, that's exactly why I was thinking the work session might be more appropriate to deal with all those questions and have the team from the Planning Commission here that dealt with it to hear what their view of it was. And so, you know, I'll go either route that most folks want to go. But I, I can tell you that I'm not prepared tonight to direct staff to do anything relative to an ordinance on ADUs. I feel like I need to know a lot more about this before I entertain any, participating in any kind of emotion, except on a negative basis. And I don't necessarily want to have that sort of presumption. But that's the way I feel right now.
Well, I think maybe the general public is with you. And so if we can have the presentation now at a council meeting, more people can learn about it. So maybe we just have the presentation and then leave the discussion for a work session. But I think the more people who can learn about it, the better. That, then they can inform, the community can inform us their opinions as well.
That's fine. And, and fairness to both our staff and to Commissioner Smith, we've got those folks here and they've been here all evening. And I think it would be most fair to both Addison Lewis and Commissioner Smith to make their presentation. So I think that's a point well taken. So let's, let's at least do that, and then we'll have a conversation about, about what to do next.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So this agenda item comes from the Planning Commission's 2022 Work Plan Regarding Accessory Dwelling Units. Specifically, the commission was tasked with studying the topic, giving a better understanding of what they are, how they're regulated in other communities, and then making a recommendation on whether or not the city should move forward with drafting an ordinance to allow them in Edina. So Commissioner Quincy Smith was the lead commissioner for this work plan item. He and Commissioners Miranda and Bennett met regularly over the course of 2022, along with city staff from different departments to kind of get a better understanding. And they presented their findings to the full commission at a work session last November and then drafted the advisory communication that's in your packet, which was ultimately approved by the commission on January 11th. So here tonight to present the commission's recommendation is Commissioner Quincy Smith.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Smith, nice to have you with us. Thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you.
For being here.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Quincy Smith, 6208 Ewing Avenue South, Member of the Planning Commission. What I'm here to do, and I know you guys have seen the information, and it's a lot of information, but I'm here to recommend that we move forward with drafting the ordinance for ADU. For those of you who are watching, ADU stands for accessory dwelling unit. And really what it is, it's an independent housing unit. It can be either attached to your primary residence, or it can be detached on your property essentially. And so we would like to recommend that we move forward this year to, to work on those ordinances. Just a couple of points I just wanted to touch on. I won't go through the entire deck because I know there's a lot of stuff there, but we'd be very open to questions to help educate the public and educate the, the staff. There were just a few things, we had a points of discussion in the presentation. Two things just to touch on, you know, the staff, as, as Addison pointed out, we, we met regularly as a team and discovered that the southwest corner of the city, really, is getting really close to the capacity for the sewer lines and sewer service. And so if we had more units, you know, folks building ADUs on their property and that increases, it could have a, an impact on the service of the sewer capacity in that side of the city. This is something that's well known by the city, and the staff is already working through the process to alleviate that and increase capacity. But if we were to pass one right away, if there were any requests for building ADUs in that southwest half of the city, we would have to get additional eyes and, and be approved by the engineering team. The other key point that I think might be meaningful here would be just the cost. You know, building costs are high these days. And certainly if you build on your own property, you don't have to worry about land costs as much. But building a separate unit and a detached ADU on your property could have significant expense. We do think that if we go down that path, what we'll explore as our planning commission is ways that we could help homeowners reduce some of that cost. It could be through different vehicles, like reducing the fees, the permitting fees, if you want to build something like that, providing architectural designs and drawings to help reduce the architectural costs as a, as a, as a key, key point there. And there might be some other stuff that we could do to help homeowners with getting that established. If you have an attached ADU, one of the key things that we have to also consider is the one hour fire separation between the, the primary residence and the ADU unit, you know? So before, or maybe today, you might have your, your family member live in the basement, and it's probably separated pretty well. But if you convert it into an ADU unit, you have to put in that extra fire separation insulation between the, the, the separating wall essentially, which would require breaking a wall down, for example, and rebuilding something that's more sustainable, more, more dense that could have that one hour fire separation. All the other points and the discussion points that we did cover in the presentation would be things that we will work through as a planning commission, discuss deeply and bring back if we were to write an ordinance. And it would be through many, many rounds, things like by rights versus through conditional use permits, all those items we work through as a team and, and bring back. So this is just giving us the green light essentially to start working on those ordinances. Then we could bring it back, of course, with this team to go through first, second, third readings, how much of a time it takes to we get it right. So with that, I'll, I'll pause and be open to any questions that the council has.
Questions, folks?
Are we not, are we not going through the presentation then?
I was told I had five minutes, but I could go through the presentation? If that works for the team?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was thinking you must have just had a single slide, but maybe he's got a presentation. Oh, here.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. All right. I'll just kind of walk this through here. I'll skip through a, a few of the slides from, from before. But again, this was, as I mentioned before, what an ADU is. It's an, it's an individual or independent dwelling unit within the same property. So you could see a couple of different examples here of an attached, of a detached ADU, an attached one, and it could either go in the basement level, in the attic, it could be on top of your garage. There's just different ways you could conform this to your property to make it work. And so these were just some examples. Again, some more examples, very beautiful. You could design it in so much different ways. And with the size of the lots that we have in the city, we do believe that any type, attached or detached, would work for the city. The benefits, of course, there's a lot of great benefits. We see some residents, if you want to have an additional type of housing in the city, ADUs can make that available. So it's not necessarily an affordable housing unit, and it's not a, a, a brand new home purchase, but it's a, it's a form of housing that can be affordable for someone coming to the city. As we know, the cost to build, et cetera, is really high. And we don't have much first time homes in the city. And so this can fill that gap essentially for new folks moving in. If you have older parents that want to live with you and you don't want to send them to a separate home, they could live with you in your ADU as an option. If you're someone who wants to sub, augment their income, you can rent out that ADU unit as well and, and collect some renting fees from that. So there's just a ton of different options that you could do with an, with an ADU to, to fulfill different housing needs that, that one might have. These just kind of go through a couple of the same examples there of the benefits, or a ton of benefits. And again, the points of this discussion, there were quite a few, but the top two I did touch on is just the sewer capacity item, which you'll see a slide out here in a minute, and then just the pricing. Of course, as we go through the ordinance, things like the owner occupied, you know? One thing that we have seen in some other ADU ordinances is that they want the owners to actually live in the primary residence and rent out or have the ADU, have someone else live there, but have the owner on the property. One of the main drivers for that was there were concerns about the upkeep of the property. If the owner's not there, it might go to disrepair or not be upkept as much. So that was one concern that we could work through if we need that in our ordinance or not. Max allowed, certainly, that was one item as well. Like, how many family members do you want to have living in that ADU unit? If you could even build more than one ADU unit on your property, that's another concern that, that we were thinking about, but we'll have to work through in the ordinance. Again, the city of Edina, for the different lot sizes and housing designs, we think attached, detached or internal would perfectly work in this city. So not sure that we want to limit it to any one type of ADU design. The size, of course, is another key factor that we have to work through as a, as a team. Some cities have sizes, it can be as small as 300 square feet, others could go up to like 1,000 square feet. And then the pricing. Now, we did talk about permitting by right versus a conditional use permit. Of course, if we make this permitting by right in the city, then anybody who has a home can, you know, essentially want to build an ADU if they would like to. But if it had to go through a process of a conditional use where neighborhoods, you know, the neighbors get involved to now debate whether or not you should have an ADU on your property, it gets a little bit tricky. And, you know, some folks might say, well, I don't want this structure next to my yard and this kind of stuff. And then they could make it a little bit political. So again, no decisions here, but that's just one thing that we have to decide as a city, how we want to go about doing that. Parking, we certainly want to maintain our current parking ordinance that we have today. We don't think it's going to change a whole lot. But if you have two families now living on the same lot, and there's one garage, the garage could get full, you might have to park on the driveway. You know, once you're not on the street, it should work. But we have to also look at what, what would the parking changes look like with this? Water access connections and sewer access connections is another key point here. We do believe like the city would provide water service, no matter what design we come up with. The sewer lines would be something that would have to be factored in. You might have to drill and dig a new trench for a new sewer line to a detached ADU or increase the capacity of your sewer line in your, in your current residence. Again, that's a cost, but the homeowner, when they come up with their designs, would have to look at what kind of sewer access connections would they need to put in place? Subdivisions and sales, right? We certainly want to think about that. If you want to subdivide a property, what does that impact look like for having an ADU? And of course, meeting all the building codes. We certainly want to have safe units, nothing that's going to have any kind of issues. It can be as safe as if you're going to build a brand new house. Again, this, this graph shows the neighborhoods that would be affected if we were to put one in place today. From the engineering team, these are the areas where the sewer capacity is, you know, almost at capacity. And so if there's a significant increase in new housing units in these areas, it might have an adverse impact on sewer service. But something that will be remediated in the near future. And maybe later on, Director T could give us some idea on timelines there. But this was one section that we did think about that this might have an impact. Overall, we still do think the benefits outweigh the downsides. We could work through all those key questions through, I would say, multiple rounds of conversation and tweaking the ordinance. We do think it's something that would work for the city of Edina. Our neighboring cities, St. Louis Park, Minnetonka, Ridgefield, they all have ADU ordinances. doing in terms of their zoning, the number of ADUs they have put in place, whether it was attached, detached, or internal as an option, max sizes, height, et cetera. So again, they're all tweaked uniquely for that city, and we could look at this and try to come up with something that's somewhat comparable to what we could do here in Edina. So I don't want to drain the entire slide, but I could certainly jump into some questions here, some comparatives with demographics, et cetera, we could certainly talk through as well. So I'll pause for now.
Questions for the Commissioner? Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one of the questions I think that's going to be a big deal is the setback. And if we continue, if we require the ADU to have the same setback requirements as the primary residence, have you done an inventory of how many lots where that would even be possible across the city?
Good question. We have not done an in-depth analysis. I'm guessing if you have a lot that is already pushed to the back of your yard, let's say, and you can't really go any further, you know, that property may not be a good candidate for an attached ADU, but maybe, I mean, a detached ADU, but maybe an attached ADU that would certainly work. And we don't think that every single property, it would be feasible, but so that's why we wanted to have all options, attached, detached, and internal, to accommodate for some of these issues that you have. But we haven't yet looked at what percentage of homes could have a detached ADU unit and still meet that setback requirement.
So I think especially as we're looking at the sewer capacity, if we can have a sense of how many of these would be possible, if everybody decided they wanted to have an ADU, you know, how many are we looking at in the city? I think that'd be a, you know, I don't know exactly how you'd get that data, but something along those lines would be useful for me as I consider this. Thank you. Great report.
Member Richard?
Yes. Commissioner Smith, could you go back to the other slide that showed the percentage or the number of ADUs that other communities have seen that one exactly? And I do remember looking at an article recently in the Star Tribune about how ADUs have been approved, but we haven't seen this massive deluge of everybody wanting to do one. And I think in part, that's because they do tend to be very small, about 300 square feet. I believe the average cost was something around, in the Star Tribune article, about $300,000 to, you know, redo your garage so that it was strong enough to put one up. So that's a comment that I want to make. And I do appreciate the comparative analysis that your group is doing, looking at St. Louis Park, Ridgefield, Bloomington, Minnetonka. I think that is very informative. The other thing I would just like to add, as someone who used to be an architectural historian, this is really part of Edina's architectural residential heritage. You look at the ranch-style homes that are on a slope that have that setup that you referenced, where you do have this unit that can function independently. And a lot of times, I look across the street at this house, it's got two front doors. Why does it have two front doors? You know, because one goes down to that lower level. Then when we first moved into Edina from Minneapolis, we were told very specifically, you do not say basement here, you say lower level. But, you know, it is something that I've heard people say is really very helpful, especially in today's day and age, you know, during the COVID, when it was more, we're still sort of in it, but people who had relatives who could not get the care that they need and then have to bring them into their home, but, you know, people want to have their own separate living space. So I'm kind of dumping a lot, and I guess this is more of a comment than a question, but I do really appreciate the table and all of the research that you all have done. So thank you.
Just so I could respond to that to some degree, I 100%.
Would you hold the microphone closer, please?
Sorry. Hope you guys can hear me now. When we were looking at this, one of the questions that we were talking about as a planning commission was, would this drive a high demand? Would you see a flood coming in? And then we said, you know what, let's just look at these other cities and see what it looks like. And it hasn't been a tremendous flood as we were initially thinking, that people really, really would build one right away. And so going back to the southwest quadrant sewer capacity, it would be a case-by-case basis. I think the pace at which we build these would be okay for the engineering team to approve them one by one, versus a flood coming in and then just have to pull the brakes up and say, nobody could build it anymore. But it's really curious. I don't know what it's going to look like in Edina if we do pass it, if it's going to be a flood or not, but based on the neighboring cities, it seems like it's a trickle.
It's a trickle. I was thinking trickle.
Any other follow-on comments or questions, Member Richard?
No.
Okay. Member Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Why are we looking at doing this is my first question.
So this was something that was on the 2022 work plan as an item for us to do a review and recommendation. I'm not sure what came before it, like what drove it, but...
Because that's my question, what's driving it, yeah.
Maybe speak to that a little bit. So it was something that was identified in the comprehensive plan, the Housing Strategy Task Force report, and the comprehensive, or and the Climate Action Plan.
Because we think that...
As a policy tool that could help with, help the city meet housing and sustainability goals.
Okay. Okay. So I have been in communities that have these, and there's, and it's kind of a broad spectrum. Like on the one extreme, it's we want affordable housing, and this is a way that we can accomplish some of that, or we have elderly parents that are living with us, that's one extreme. The other extreme is in extremely wealthy communities, it's a way to subsidize mortgages. And so you have an attached, whether it's, or in those communities, they're like carriage houses. It's on top of the, your garage, or it's attached to a much larger property, those types of things. And so I'm asking a question, just to be clear, what problem we're trying to solve? Because one thing I could, I actually could get behind is saying, and you mentioned it already, maybe this ordinance says it's not a free-for-all in Edina because we have other infrastructure types of challenges. So it is something that you can do, but you have to come to the city, there's a certain size lot, there are all these requirements. And so that could be one way, that could be an ordinance, right? And the intent of that kind of ordinance is actually to stem the tide, because we don't want a lot of these in our community, because our community isn't, doesn't have the infrastructure to support it, versus we're trying to encourage it. And so those are, that's where my head is, is trying to understand what's, not necessarily just what the benefits of ADUs are, but for our community, why wouldn't we want people to use this or choose this as a solution? Because just so happens today is the, this is the second time we've heard from the planning commission, we got issues with sewers, right? So at some point, as a community, we got to say, if we think that these, in this example, an ADU is going to be beneficial for us in the future, we actually have some other problems that we need to address before we go and start creating policy that encourages things like ADUs. So I, you know, as you were talking through it, I kind of convinced myself of where the mayor started, sharing the information at council, but then really kind of rolling our sleeves up to figure out some of the broader answers, broader questions that we need to get answers to, to figure out what kind of policy we want to put in, type of ordinance we might want to put in place and why.
Member Agnew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you for all the work that you've done on this. I know the immense amount of research and effort that you and others from the planning commission did to pull it together. I do think that, you know, I am particularly interested in pursuing this, and I think it's because of the place that it has in so many of our guiding documents as a city, right? So when you look at the comprehensive plan, you look at our Climate Action Plan, and Addison, I forget the third one, but I know that it's in there as well. And I just, I always go back to, you know, the time and effort that our community members put into creating those guiding documents, and the fact that that shows up now in three, I think is something that's really important to me, and it tells me that we at least need to figure this out and see it through. And so I don't, I don't know if, you know, the exact goal is such that we have to only do it to, you know, lots that are above a quarter of an acre, right? Like, I don't think that we're to that level of really defining what it needs to mean within Edina, but I do think it's important that it's something that we pursue. And if we were to tell the planning commission at this point, like, no, we shouldn't pursue it, I would just really challenge us as a council of, then why didn't we catch it through any of these other guiding documents that we've approved as a city? And I think that it's well worth our time to have some working sessions, work through this, and I think also talk through what is that story? Because that's what I'm hearing from Member Pierce, is really just, not necessarily, let's not do it, but more, help tell the story. Why is this important? Why is it in three of our guiding documents as a city? And what do we actually think it will do? And, you know, when we talk about things like infrastructure concerns, I know it was brought up twice tonight, but I also know that there are like overworking plans already, and I don't feel like we heard that part of the story to address those infrastructure concerns, especially in that southwest quadrant of the city. And so I think it just requires more work, but I think maybe where I'll pose the question back to the council is, does that then mean that we pause on this motion that's kind of presented here for us tonight? Or does that mean that we still push forward to have them continue working, have them work with us, pull together a working session in two or three months, whenever we can get it on, and start working through these details? Because it is something that we, as a city, have already decided is something that we should be pursuing. Thank you.
Member Pierce?
Thank you. So I, just to be clear where my head is, I am not suggesting that we don't work on it. I know that you guys do an immense amount of work, and it's very much appreciated. And I think in many instances, sometimes things are presented that really start to shape the way we think about the future. And so I think that that is immensely important for us to be thinking about it. And so I posed the question the way I did, because I could give you several different answers for why we might do this, but I don't know, I would rather have us as a council, along with the planning commission, really dive into what problem are we trying to solve, and how are we going to do that, and what's necessary? And it feels like we need to do a little bit more work to be able to give guidance on what could be or should be in an ordinance. Because I gave the example, you could do one that says, yep, we're open for business, we want to do this, right? We could encourage it, but I don't think our infrastructure is at a place yet where we want to do that. So then we would be given guidance to say, well, let's do a phase approach, right? And so I think those are the, that's the kind of information that we should be giving the planning commission in order to do the best job of coming forward with something that the city can best benefit from. So I think, I'm not suggesting that we don't move forward at all. Yeah.
For me, I would say that directing staff to work with the planning commission to draft an ordinance on ADUs right now would be, for me, premature. I'd rather figure out the answer to Member Pierce's question, and that is, is this a good fit for our city, and if so, how and under what circumstances? If we answer those questions in a positive way, then you go to work crafting an ordinance. This is more information than we probably ever had on ADUs, but it doesn't mean we haven't talked about ADUs in the past. In fact, we've had conversations in years gone by where there was conversation about ADUs, and it was rejected as a concept, because really what you're doing is you're creating a multifamily situation in a single-family neighborhood. That's the bottom line, is do you want to do that or not? But I think, you know, for a lot of us, we wanted to, we wanted to understand them better and learn as much as we could about them, because we had some sensitivity and some emotional attachment to the notion that, hey, shouldn't somebody be able to have their mother-in-law living in a beautiful, you know, room or a house, a cottage in the backyard, or a carriage house above the garage, as Member Pierce says, you know? But I don't know if I'm prepared to have somebody have one of those and decide they want to use it for short-term rental. I mean, we banned short-term rental, but I mean, they decide they want to have a renter in there, 30 days or more, you know? And now we got the problem of, oh, do they have room in the driveway for an extra car? And we don't allow cars on the street, and, but if people can't park in the driveway, and they got to move, juggle cars all around, first thing in order, park. I mean, just to me, there's a multitude of things to think about here that require just kind of a sit-down session with people that worked on this at the planning commission, because you've wrestled through a lot of these issues and came to the conclusion, yeah, that on balance, we should, we should keep moving forward. So I want to ask those questions, I want my colleagues to ask those questions, and I want to make a decision then on whether I think it's a good idea or not to change, you know, the structure basically of a single-family neighborhood. I think that's the bottom-line question. You know, several years ago, the city of Minneapolis decided in the quest for more housing, they were going to allow, I think, fourplexes in single-family neighborhoods, and single-family neighborhoods went ballistic and were worried about property values. I don't know if, if, I can't remember if that was allowed at the end of the day. I think it was. And I don't know if it's had any adverse impact on property values, but I think that's another piece of the puzzle, is that I'd like to know if, you know, how those, if there has been any adverse impact or positive impact on housing values as a result of communities allowing ADUs. Now, in Minnetonka, that was really interesting, there's 61 of those there since 1986. You were out there for several years, but the lots out there are an acre, at least an acre.
Minimum lot size is double the size of, minimum lot size in Edina.
And I don't know what they were putting them up for, you know, what, how they get used out there, or are there some limitations on, there has to be a family member living in either the house or the ADU?
Yeah, I don't recall the details. There weren't, perhaps Addison does, but there were none during my time.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I know, going back to 1986, they only allowed attached units, so they didn't allow like a detached structure in the backyard.
Okay.
They only recently just changed that to start allowing detached units.
Okay. So the, so it's probable that the 61 since 86 are attached units?
I think almost all, I think they all are.
Yeah. Okay. Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the issues that we saw at the National League of Cities is that cities that adopted an ADU ordinance saw very little uptake, which we can see in your chart here. And so one of the questions that I hope that you will bring to us when we can sit down and have a, you know, face-to-face conversation about this is, well, if we allow it, are we then going to promote it, and are we going to subsidize it? Because that's what communities who really want to have ADUs have found that they have to do. They have to hold people's hands, they have to promote it, and then they, I think it was part of the discussion, might have to subsidize it. So we need to be prepared to look at that issue as well. So if you could include that, that'd be great. Thank you.
So, I mean, if you, you can...
Because that's what communities who really want to have ADUs have found that they have to do. They have to hold people's hands, they have to promote it, and then they, I think it was part of the discussion, might have to subsidize it. So we need to be prepared to look at that issue as well. So if you could include that, that'd be great. Thank you.
So, I mean, if you, you can argue that this is in the comp plan, but also it's in the comp plan as an overriding principle, is that 93% of our community is single-family residential, and it's the crown jewel of our town. And I want to know how this allowing an ADU could potentially adversely or positively impact the property values in these single-family neighborhoods, allowed or disallowed. I think it's critical. Because there's no question about it, if we allow it, you're really changing single-family neighborhoods into multifamily situations, whether you're relatives in there or not. So, for me, the next stop is a work session. That's what I would prefer. I don't know about my colleagues.
Oh, yeah.
Work session, work session. Okay. Member Rissler, you're comfortable with that idea?
I am, but again, I just want to say that this is not foreign to Edina, and it is in our R1, and it is part of our architectural heritage. We do have 1950 Ramblers that have lower levels that are completely equipped. So I just, I hear what you're saying, but I also just want to, I guess, normalize this idea. So I think you and I may represent the ends of the spectrum.
Yeah, well, that would be good information to have in the context of a conversation, too.
Okay.
Yeah, because I, I think you're right. I didn't think about it in that context, but I certainly know people that had apartments in their basement, in a single-family neighborhood.
Right.
So, next step is, we've, we've worked on this for, you know, you guys have done a lot of work on this, and it was really good work, again. Thank you, you and your colleagues. Next stop's a work session, and it's not going to be for a couple of months.
The first opening, I just looked, is May 16th.
Okay. This is, this, to me, is a go, is being, you got to be deliberate here, and slow, and slow she goes, to me. Slow and, slowly, slowly and carefully. Okay, so no motion on that tonight, I guess?
Well, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commission correspondents, manage your comments.
Two, just, well, one quick comment. Just wanted to tell you, as we pulled together our various statistics from, from last year, we are getting some indications about what a successful year it was fiscally for the city. Two indications from the building side is that we had $511 million of new development built in the city in 2022. That was the second most in Hennepin County, only to Minneapolis, and it's the most in our city's history, half a billion dollars of new development in the city. That generated $6.4 million of new building permit revenue, which is also a record for, for our building division as well. And we'll be talking about how to deploy that money with the council as, when our audit is completed in the next couple of months. And that's all I have.
Good. Let's go to Member Agnew. Anything for the good of the order this evening?
No, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Member Pierce.
Number for me.
Member Rissler.
I do have stuff, and I have handouts, because I met with Melissa Madison from the 494 Corridor Commission, and so I have their legislative priorities that I will distribute to you. And also, for people who are watching, you can get this really neat display case with all kinds of information on it. And I am going to go around and just kind of look in public places to see where this is available. It doesn't look like we really have space for this kind of thing in our lobby, but just want to check the libraries and all of that. But a lot is happening with the 494 corridor project this year, and in fact, this is when construction does get underway in 2023. And so I have talked to Manager Neil about having Melissa Madison come and give a presentation to the commission, and we're hoping that that can happen in April. But a lot of people do use the 494 corridor, and so I think it would be in the best interest to, you know, have a presentation so that the community can see what's going on. And lots of really interesting things. I got a little bling, and also programs called Get Your Tenants Rolling, which Manager Hawkinson has told our apartments about, and how you can get reduced passes for tenants. So it's a really great program that allows people to save money on public transit. So that is my thing. I also had a ride-along with the Edina Police, and it was a really wonderful experience. And so getting things in place in my head in terms of serving and enjoying it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for serving on there. It's an important commission to serve on, I think. It's kind of Minnesota's Main Street, if you think about it that way.
I learned so much sitting with Melissa. In fact, like, all of the counties, except for maybe one, have residents who use the 494 corridor.
Wow.
You know, and so it's, it's a huge, major thing, and it's exciting to think about changes that are coming our way. So, yay.
I think there's probably a quarter of a million vehicles a day that use that interchange.
Wow.
So, Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the ITASKA Group is a group of leaders from the largest businesses in Minnesota, and they get together and look at issues that affect our community and how business in the community can work together to make this a prosperous state. And they held an event, which you were a panelist at, last week, and I just wanted to say some of the goals that they're talking about, because we talk a lot about affordable housing, and it's not just an Edina issue, it's a Minnesota issue. And the ITASKA Group has really put their time and energy into this, and they have set a goal of producing 18,000 new housing units in the metro each year, from 2021 to 2030. And that includes producing 2,090 units of affordable housing each year. And I just thought it was really important to know that, that when we're looking at growth in the area, this is happening statewide, we need housing, there's still a housing shortage, and, and everybody's looking at how we're going to address that. And I thought that was really, and there's a lot of really interesting information about what's happening and who's behind it, and, but it's, it's just great to know that it's not just us. So, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. So the panel at the ITASKA meeting up at Windows on Minnesota, I suppose there were probably 100 people there, and it was interesting to be a part of a panel that was composed of, so I was a local government person, Deidre Edwards, I think, from Common Bond.
There's the list.
There's the list. Oh, and Don, excuse me, Don Di Edwards, who's the Senior Vice President, Wells Fargo. Deidre Schmidt, I knew I had her last name wrong, President and CEO of Common Bond. Andy McMahon, who's the VP of Community Engagement with United Healthcare. Me representing the local government, and then Don Di Edwards representing Wells Fargo. And then Paul Williams, President and CPO, CEO of Project for Pride and Living, did a great job as a moderator. Don Di Edwards, it turns out, is the husband of Daphne Edwards, the Communications Director at the Edina Public Schools.
Oh, that's great.
And he's a, just did a fabulous job for Wells Fargo in talking about some of the things they were working on, strategies they were working on around homeownership and, and determining how they could best assist on down payment strategies, because there's so many people of color, and this is all a strategy around reducing that gap in homeownership for people of color and, and white people in the metropolitan area, which is one of the worst disparities in the country. And so Wells is working on that. ITASKA is working on an overall strategy in terms of coming up with ideas on increasing the, the volume of affordable housing. Andy McMahon from United Healthcare, to my surprise, I didn't even know they were involved in affordable housing, and they were, they've got $800 million invested in different projects, affordable housing projects around the country. So it was eye-opening for me, too. And then they asked me to talk about, because of the chair of the TAB, the relationship between transit and density. And so I had good data from the council on that. They had just done, finished a study in 2022 on the relationship between transit and, and development. And so in 2021, if memory serves me right, there was $1.3 billion worth of development along high corridor transit lines in, in the metro area, and is significant sort of investment for the future predicted there as well. So the other thing I wanted to talk about was, I know some of our residents have raised this idea, too, hey, when the mayor gets back, and he, you know, she should be reporting out on that midwinter meeting of the U.S. Conference of Mayors that he went to. And so bear with me a little bit, and I'll try to tell you a little bit about what happened there. That was the 18th, that was the day after, I left the morning after, we had our city council meeting on the 17th, so I was there the 18th through the 20th. The first session I got in on, when I was, when I arrived on Wednesday, was the hate crime session, and the moderator was the mayor of Oklahoma City. And we had a woman named Vanita Gupta there from the Justice Department, who was talking about the fact that hate crimes reporting is down about 22%. And some of you that go to the National League of Cities meeting in March are going to probably hear some of these same data points, and, because I'm sure there'll be some commonality and topics covered. And he came, she came to the U.S. Conference of Mayors to encourage cities to engage in reporting to the U.S. Justice Department incidents of hate crimes, and they're willing to come and train cities, Manager Neil, they're willing to come and train cities on making hate crime assessments. Now, I think, we think we're pretty good at that here, but nonetheless, keep that in mind that the Justice Department is willing to come out, and maybe even to the metropolitan area and talk about it. A guy named Max Sevillia from the Anti-Defamation League talked about the fact that hate incidents are increasing globally, and they've got an app that can be used to help identify and track hate symbols, which was also interesting, and they're doing it in a pilot right now with Edmonton, Alberta. And then Ron Nierenberg, the mayor of San Antonio, talks about what they're doing in San Antonio to develop a campaign called Compassionate San Antonio. It's a committee that was formed there to assess the threats to public health through hate crimes. And then I think one of the people sitting next to me was a guy named Johanna Vardianen. He was the mayor of Helsinki, Finland. And so he said they're seeing some early signals of extremism in Finland, and Finland has a self-described soft Scandinavian holistic approach to dealing with kids that are perceived to be moving towards extremist tendencies. And they're trying to be as completely inclusive as they can from a city standpoint, many of the same sort of strategies that we have, good schools, good transportation. And the mayor of San Diego offered up some thoughts on it as well, as did the mayor of Richmond, Virginia, which has a long history of, of hate crime in Richmond, based on racism. And they finally now, you know, he made the point that at one time Richmond was the second-largest slave trading center in the South, and that was something I should have realized but didn't know. And they finally got all the statues down in Richmond that relate to the Confederacy. And he noted that Virginia has 300-plus incidents of anti-Semitic attacks, just in 2022. And the mayor of Munich was there as well, Germany, who talked about two types of escalating hate crimes in Germany. Crimes against Jewish people was one of them, one of the categories, and then crimes against women elected officials.
Oh, boy.
On the rise. And then that afternoon, I had to take a break and run over to The Hill. Jennifer Benarott lined up an interview, they, I used to contact her. So I did an interview with The Hill and one of their correspondents about some of the issues that were peculiar to the work I do there on the Transportation Committee, but also just generally on equity and safety in public transit, American Rescue Plan, some of those broad sort of categories. And then also went to a session on reducing gun violence, and I'm sure you'll have one of those at the, at the National League of Cities. And keep this in mind, too, that Amy Solomon from the Department of Justice, she said that she oversees a $5 billion program that provides funding for cities. And they've got a gun intelligence center set up, they feel, they said, feel free to reach out to her regarding all the various grant programs that are available, with $5 billion available for cities, we should be thinking about that. Over 500,000 guns were used in crimes last year. Byron Brown from Buffalo talked about, of course, that horrible incident they had in Buffalo. And Buffalo is suing the distributors and dealers and manufacturers of firearms that were involved in that mass shooting by the white supremacists who killed 10 people in Buffalo and wounded six. In San Jose, they've got an innovative approach to gun ownership. Gun owners in San Jose have to have a license, but they have to, as part of the licensing process, provide proof of general liability insurance coverage, which is a little bit novel. And the mayor of St. Louis, too, talked about all the trouble they're facing as respect to increased number of weapons on the street. They've seen a 500% increase in automatic weapons in St. Louis in the last year. 90% of the guns they confiscated were automatics now, over 2,000 guns in 2022. Homicides in, in St. Louis are up 166%. Baltimore seems to be having some success around homicide reduction and also around dealing with juveniles that are involved in car thefts. So I left thinking that there were two cities that we needed to be visiting with, at least those of us that are working on heels, and that was Tampa, who's using a multi-pronged strategy with kids, and then Baltimore, and so I'll, I'll follow up on that with those We had a closed meeting for mayors, that's the opening day on the 18th, dealing with threats to mayors. And the first speaker was the new mayor of Louisville, Kentucky, who during the course of his campaign, had somebody come into his campaign office, and from about 15 feet away, shoot at him six times and, and missed every time.
Oh.
It was unbelievable. He had a, he had a hole through his sweater, and that was it.
Wow.
And then the mayor of Reno, Hillary Sheevey, who's in line to become the new president of the USCM, took her car in for service to a station, and they had it up on the rack, and they discovered that somebody had put a tracker on her car.
Oh, geez.
And it was tracking her every move around town. This was during election season. And so she doesn't know who paid for it. They found out who did it, it's a private detective, he won't, of course, divulge who his client is. So one of the things they said, and I think this is probably true for all the council members, they said, and maybe, Aaron, you know the answer to this, it's, they've got a former chief of Philadelphia, Chuck Ramsey, who's a consultant to the USCM, he said, make sure mayors and city council members have their address in the dispatch system, and that, so it can be flagged quickly in case there's an event. And make sure you watch your social media footprint, be careful about that. We live in different times than ever before. The next morning, Scott Neal's old boss from Mount Vernon, Iowa.
Mount Pleasant, Iowa.
Mount Pleasant, Iowa. There you go. Tom Vilsek, who's the Secretary of Agriculture, was the mayor of Mount Pleasant. At the time, Scott Neal was a young city manager. And on that Friday, we were there, President Biden was really talking up Vilsek, he said he's really smart and really capable.
And not a threat.
And not what?
And not a threat.
Yeah, no, not at all, not at all. And he wants mayors to be working on, and I suppose this extends to city councils, be working on food security and nutrition issues, so something that is kind of right in our There was an interesting quote from Plato that somebody used, I think it was this guy named Luis Gallardo. Plato said, "A city is what it is because the citizens are who they are." And maybe you, some of you have heard that before, that quote from Plato. I had not heard it before, and I've heard a lot of quotes, but I've never heard that Frank Mutz, the pollster, was there, and he's primarily a Republican pollster. He's done a new study, and he had a new, he's talked about new mayoral language, and this would extend to all of us on this council for 2023. Use positive language. Things like, for example, enhancing public safety. Things like, for example, enhancing public safety, not reducing crime, those kinds of concepts, stay positive. The anger in the country is real. 70% of the people in the United States are just flat-out angry. And he thinks local government is the only entity that can fix this problem. And what do people want out of local politics? They want results. So when you talk about results, you know, and you're talking about the economy, talk about affordability, not the economy. And what people want most, he said, were fewer hassles, more money in their pocket, no worries, more choices, more time. And the best skill sets that he's seen for local elected leaders, council members or mayors, is the ability to engage in effective problem solving, which I think we've been really good at over the years, and responding to people's concerns. What matters most to people? Results, solutions, getting things done. People want local government officials to have a detailed plan of action, and people favor mayors and city council members with common sense. So those are some of the things that he touched on. And we had a session on climate mitigation resiliency. I won't go into detail on that. Wells Fargo's doing some work around that. The morning plenary was, the head of Homeland Security, Alejandro Mayorkas, who talked about the new threats are the one-off individuals with the grievance that's stoked up online. That's what they're seeing the biggest trouble right now. He said the infrastructure system is increasingly under attack, and I see they just arrested a couple of guys yesterday morning for that. And those challenges are not unique, they're just kind of shifting a little bit. And the problems of migration are not unique. There is displaced peoples everywhere. Venezuelans and Nicaraguans on the move, he said, in particular. Homeland Security has found, has funds available to nonprofits that are at risk, that can help at-risk people. Climate change is having a profound impact on security, and they're thinking through all scenarios from a homeland security standpoint. Talked about local infrastructure. On that Thursday, I made a presentation on behalf of our region on equity efforts we are making around transportation, and I'm going to skip through a bunch of this material. On Friday, yeah, we had a good presentation of transportation by Charles Coes, who's Deputy Director of the USDOT. And then, of course, on Friday morning, I think all of you knew this, I got a call and got invited over to meet with Pete Buttigieg, along with the mayor of Evanston, Illinois, mayor of Hoboken, New Jersey, and the mayor of Denver, who's the Chair of Transportation. We had a good session with him. And then, I thought it was an interesting presentation by the guy who's the CEO of Hertz. They're doing more electric vehicle leasing to Uber drivers, and those people make 10% to 15% more in revenue that are using electric vehicles, and they make more in gratuities. And so he was going to provide more information on where the charging is getting done, it was going to help with electric, figuring out electric fleet obligations. Then of course, that meeting with Buttigieg, and what they're working on there is Vision Zero, they're trying to get the deaths, highway deaths reduced and local deaths reduced as well. In fact, we got a shout-out, I guess, last week on PBS NewsHour, when he was on there, he talked about Edina, Minnesota, and it's zero deaths. And, you know, all the legislation around the IIJA was designed around safety, equity, and transit, and that's what regions are concentrating on now. And then he came over, Secretary Pete came over to talk about what they were working on to the broad group as well. They've done 3,700 bridge projects, 69,000 miles of highway reconstruction, 1,000 electric buses that have been produced. So he had good information to share. Merrick Garland, the Attorney General, was there and spoke on fentanyl. He wants mayors and cities to be partners with justice to help work on fentanyl problems. He said it's 50 times more potent than heroin. I mean, he had some data I didn't know about related to fentanyl. That 2mg of fentanyl, which will fit on the point of a pencil, will kill somebody. And there's 224, here's another one for you, Scott, $224 million available to the Justice Department to hire more additional policemen in 2023. And then we went to the White House Friday afternoon, and that was a really interesting session. We had a panel with Gene Spurling, who was kind of the implementer for ARPA. And ARPA, of course, is, for those in our community, they know that we got $4 million from ARPA and $4 million through the CARES Act. All of that was through the efforts of the U.S. Conference of Mayors and the National League of Cities to try to instill in Congress the notion that some monies ought to go directly to cities. So belonging to these organizations brings real value, I think, for our community and every community across the country. ARPA has been the most pro-local government aid package ever created. Cities got money directly for the, maybe the first time in history. Mitch Landrieu is a former mayor of New Orleans, who's implementing the IIJA Act, which is 1.2 trillion. And then John Podesta is the Infrastructure Reduction Act czar, and he's got about $307 billion in IRA money to help build back America, build back better. And 2/3 of that money is going to be going on direct pay, I think, to the cities. So there's direct pay access, direct access, tax credits, certain features of the bill will offer direct pay to cities. There's a big program on heat pumps and clean appliances, some things that I sent to Grace to have her take a look at to see if we could make some application for grants. So those were some of the things that went on there in that compressed period of time. You just go nonstop, and there's a chance to have dinner and talk to people in the evening, but I think all of you that go to the National League of Cities will have some of these same experiences, and it's, you know, it takes you away from your day job. And for me, the ability to put in those billable hours, but nonetheless, it's important for my community, I think, to have that continuing sort of professional development. And that's the way I feel this brings value to the work I do as mayor, to the work you guys do as council members. And so I think our town will be really well-served having you, whoever is going to the National League of Cities in attendance there. So that's my rather lengthy report on what happened at the midwinter meeting of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. Thank you for your patience. Anything else that caused anybody to ask a question? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moot.
Second.
Motion by Member Agnew, second by Member Jackson, or adjourn? The meeting of the city council of the city of Edina, the 7th day of February 2023. Any further discussion, those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. We stand adjourned.